April 20th, 2015, meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Fink will lead the invocation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please bow your heads. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, the county council. May we always seek the ways of righteousness, justice and mercy. Grant that we may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our county with honesty and integrity. We ask this to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're still recording.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speaker should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have Mr. Smith and Mr. Pruski give a citation presentation to the Meade High School basketball team. Who are our state champions, by the way.
If you guys go ahead and face this way, we'll get these guys in the middle of this way. Team leaders, Andrew and Mike Flankum. So today what we're doing is, I don't know if you guys have known, we're the boys' high school team, recently won the state championship here probably about a month ago, right? A little over a month ago. And I gotta tell you, it is, anytime we have teams that sort of go the extra mile, they put in that amount of work effort, it's always a good thing. And I think the county should always stand behind those types of efforts. A few weeks ago, a few years ago, I'm sorry, I think I was talking to Coach Pete about this in the hallway, there was a student called Josh McDellway, they got his name. He was an autistic boy, who was the team manager for a basketball team for about four years. And then on the last day of his senior year, his basketball career, the coach threw him into the game. And the first two shots that he took, when he was playing this basketball game, he missed. But one of the things that he did not do was give up. And what was so inspirational about this story is that when you look at his history, his story, the next six shots, I don't know if it was divine intervention or what, but he made six three-pointers back to back to back. And everybody in this stadium or in this auditorium, it sort of rushed to the floor when the game was over with, because he sort of scored those six three-pointers. He had 20 points up in total. But it was such an inspiration. And I say that because this team is also an inspiration. Anytime we have young men who persevere, work hard, and they go to practice day in and day out, I'm sure they have academic performance where they have to maintain their grades, otherwise they wouldn't be playing, which is what happened to me when I was in high school. I think one of those days, my seat went down, so then I had to back up. But that's off subject. But I say that because when you have these young men, they inspire not just their team. So what you guys do, when like that, you show us that we can do great things, and we can achieve anything that we want to do. And it doesn't matter if you lose a game here or there, it's about how you get up, how you continue on with your efforts. And I thought it was a perfect timing to the council meeting that we run and we serve at the pleasure of the community and the citizens. But I think you guys sort of inspire all of us to just go out there and just go for the goal. And I say to the Coach Pete, to the principal, to the staff, to the players, kudos for working hard and not let anyone telling you that you couldn't do it, because you can do it. And hopefully that should you go and do it again, just to show them that you guys are made of the good stuff. But what I want to do is turn it over to Andrew, so he can say a few remarks as well.
I just want to be brief. You know, Anarondle County, Meade High School is on our military base, Fort Meade. And one of the people forget that we have active duty students who are obviously supporting the school. And I just want to say for the Mustangs to have the pride to bring back, and certainly Principal Yor and the students, I just want to thank you, because certainly you brought some joy to the community. And with your leadership and everything else with Coach, we appreciate it. And on behalf, I give everybody a round of applause for you guys.
Now, each of the individual players, they do have citations, as well as the staff and the coaches. But what we're going to introduce today is just the one citation for the school as a whole, because I think it's certainly warranted. And this is not, you know, your gold ring you're probably going to be getting here any next couple of days. My goal is, or my hope is, in that 10 years, in your room, you're probably going to have your class ring or your winning ring, and this citation makes it whichever. It's probably not going to happen, but I could dream. So it goes like this, and it's signed by all the seven members of the county council, Anarondle County, Maryland, and the Anarondle County Citation, in recognition of the Meade High School Mustangs finishing an amazing playoff run and capturing the 2015 4A Maryland State Basketball Championship. The county council congratulates your school on this occasion and your continued contributions to the students of our county. So thank you all for your efforts.
Good job, man. Congratulations.
Get a group hug. Easy now. All right? Allergies coming on now.
Thank you, guys. Congrats.
I tell the, we tell all our students and all our players, we'd rather go 0-18 in class and therapy than undefeated without it. This would happen to me as a basketball team that was quite the best I've seen in this area. However, the class and therapy show is unmatched for any basketball player that I've ever had in my school. And I'm just very proud, and we're very proud of this guy for becoming a senior. So these are just outstanding young men, and the free women who serve as our managers for the team. Like I said, we're aiming to have every interaction with me be respectful and class and therapy respected and everything we can do. And we just need, led by Coach Coriero, who has been directing the college, have really taken it right. We appreciate the recognition. That's most important to me and our school community, and they demonstrate everything that.
Thank you, guys. This time, move into the regular meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject now on the printed agenda? We ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. Good evening, Ms. Johnson. We'll let you lead off, ladies first.
Good evening, everybody. At the last council meeting, I started a new theme with this question from C-SPAN about why would any U.S. citizen need protection from our government? And there are so many things that this will be, I think, I anticipate this being an ongoing thing. But in response to that, the county exec sent me an email and told me to call somebody, and I forgot to call the person, but Eric Michelson sent me an email with a plot showing where these stormwater pipes go. Only problem is, there are no pipes there. And on top of it, of course, one is labeled a State Highway Administration pipe, and obviously it's not, because the State Highway Administration, they admitted they don't own any of the pipes, that they're mine. And then they also said that one of the pipes belonged to Anarondle County. And the problem with that is, Anarondle County doesn't own any of the pipes either. And you've got about seven volumes of court documents that go through this, starting back with in 1978, from 1980, you know, and then we skip to 1993, when the Highway Administration sued me and Anarondle County. Anarondle County was my co-defendant. If they want, and the whole, one of the big points here was that if Anarondle County had any claim to any part of my road, either that it was publicly dedicated, or stormwater, or whatever else, you know, they wanted to claim, they had to claim it in that case. And they didn't. So that was 19, it was, the conclusion to that case was 1993. And I sent you an email of some of the copies of the documents from that case. I figured you did not want all of them. I subpoenaed some from the, you know, the State Highway Administration, and the Attorney General sent a bunch of them.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
But I want to thank people for trying to help. The only thing is, when you look into Weems Creek today, that's my, part of that's my backyard, and I'd really like help to, you know, solve the erosion problems.
Thank you. Mr. Bonifas?
I forgot. You know, if you're good, you know, you can share those.
Thank you. Mr. Bonifas?
Good evening, Chairman Walker, Councilman. My name is Jonathan Bonifas from 1638 Howard Chapel Court in Crofton. As many of you already know, I'm the leader of the community effort, Bill Crofton High School. I'm here tonight before this council to remind you all of the capacity problem we're facing in our county's public schools. At the end of the school year this past June, AACPS had 78,500 enrollments. By the end of September, those total enrollments rose to 79,518. That's an increase of 1,018 enrollments in just three months. Based on maintenance of effort per pupil spending, that rise in enrollment will increase the county's share of funding to the school system by approximately $7.85 million. Now, from 1996 through 2011, our county population rose by 77,386 residents. During that same period, AACPS enrollment rose by 4,782 students. That's an average of 319 students per year over 15 years. But from 2011 to 2014, AACPS enrollments rose by 2,912 students, for an average over three years of 970 students per year. That's an increase in the average of 651. Gentlemen, this capacity problem is real, and it is approaching fast. A new high school is just the start. If we don't add capacity at the high school level soon, our students and our county will have to endure the consequences of an inaction. As you enter the upcoming budget season, please keep this in mind. Thank you for all you do for Anarondle County.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifas. Any additional test?
Bill Crofton High School. And you can fund it if you give my neighbors tickets.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 2615, An ordinance concerning zoning, critical area growth allocation to OBsen property. Bill 2715, an ordinance concerning public works, capital, facility connection charges, veterans and military nonprofits exemption.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolution to be introduced this evening.
Resolution 1815, resolution designating Anarondle County Police as the primary law enforcement unit for the purposes of Title 20 of the Business Regulation Article of the State Code, including receiving certain information related to automated purchasing machines and inspecting and obtaining personal property purchased by automated purchasing machines.
Thank you. Madam, motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on resolutions number 1515, 1715, 1815, and bills number 1315, 1415, and 1515 out of order.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote out of order. Resolutions 1515, 1715, and 1815, and bills 1315, 1415, and 1515 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1515.
Resolution Appointing Members to the Anarondle County Ethics Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 1515 appoints Charles Gast and reappoints Jonathan Kagan to the Anarondle County Ethics Commission. You all should have the bios and resumes of these folks in front of you. We also have Arlene Berlin from the Boards and Commissions, if there's any questions the council may have on these appointments.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Fink.
Are these the executives' appointments, or is one of these the executives and one of these is the council?
These are both the county executive's appointment.
Both of them are the county.
As I understand, there's one appointment for the council, which will be coming anytime soon.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, sorry, let's open up the public hearing on Resolution 1515. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing a movement in the audience, resolution on 1515 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1515.
Resolution Appointing Members to the Anarondle County Ethics Commission.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1515.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 1515 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1715.
Resolution Designating the Anarondle County Police Department as the primary law enforcement unit for the purposes of Title 12 of the Business Regulation Article of the State Code, including receiving certain information related to secondhand precious metal object dealers and pawnbrokers.
Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. Resolution 1715 designates the Anarondle County Police Department as the primary law enforcement unit for the purpose of receiving certain information related to secondhand precious metal objects, dealers, and pawnbrokers. Detective Jennifer Long from the Police Department is here to answer any questions the council may have. Resolution 1715 and Resolution 1815 are very similar, required by state statute for the county to designate a law enforcement agency for these areas.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith?
So who's the designated one as it currently stands? Is it the Sheriff's Office, or?
Currently, I believe it's the Police Department, but it was never required under state statute to have an official designee. State law requires that you, by resolution or by bill, designate a law enforcement entity to be the designee for this. It's a new law.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Flugel?
May I just ask, could you give us just a little bit of background of what this activity encompasses? That they're the primary?
Sir, the Anarondle County Police Department receives electronic records from pawn shops, from secondhand dealers, and also from automated purchasing machines to track and record transactions that occurred in this county. We receive that information, we maintain that data, and we also, in some sense, I guess, inspect those dealers who are in this county. So we've been doing that for the past 30 years. There's now something in the state law, Title 20 and Title 12, that want the primary law enforcement units to designate who that primary law enforcement unit is. So we've been doing that. We have personnel designated to do that. We just need to have a resolution.
So this doesn't change any active procedure that's going on, it just complies with the state law? If you know, what drives, what's behind the state law? If you understand the legislative history of it, or why it's?
Title 12 is not a new law. That's the secondhand precious metal object dealer law. Basically, it's the law that requires gold buyers in pawn shops to report and record information and send it to law enforcement. It's not a new law. However, there have been some changes, just to designate who the primary law enforcement unit is. Title 20 deals with automated purchasing machines. That is a relatively new law. It passed last year in the Maryland General Assembly. And that is, there are some, there are some machines that started showing up in the state of Maryland called ECO ATMs, where you could go and sell a cellphone. There was nobody there. It's like an ATM machine. You sell your cellphone, present your ID to the machine, and then it actually takes your property. So state law was passed to make those kinds of machines report information to law enforcement. And again, this law, or this resolution, only designates Anarondle County as being the recipient of those records in this jurisdiction.
Is that what, automated purchasing machine? I'm just not familiar with that term. That's what that is? It buys yourself? Is it buy anything else from you?
It does. Well, there are plans to have gift card buying machines, but right now it's just cellphones and other small electronics that can be sold at these. Currently, we do not have any of these machines in Anarondle County. We had them in four of the malls, and they're no longer operating.
Oh.
By choice of the vendor.
Okay. Is there any reason for that?
I think when the state passed the law, the vendor decided that they didn't want to comply with Maryland law, so they took all the machines out of Maryland.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any additional questions for the council? Seeing none. Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing on Resolution 1715. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 1715? Seeing a movement in the audience, the public hearing on 1715 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1715.
Resolution Designating the Anarondle County Police Department as the primary law enforcement unit for the purposes of Title 12 of the Business Regulation Article.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 1715.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 1715 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1815.
Resolution Designating the Anarondle County Police Department as the primary law enforcement unit for the purposes of Title 20 of the Business Regulation Article of the State Code, relative to automated purchasing machines and inspecting and obtaining personal property purchased by automated purchasing machines.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. As we just discussed briefly, Resolution 1815 designates the Police Department as the law enforcement unit for receiving information regarding automated purchasing machines, which up until last week, or two weeks ago, I had no idea what they were as well. So the, as Detective Long described, these are machines that are similar to ATMs, where you can transfer in a cellphone or a device and receive payment for that on the spot. Detective Long is here from the Police Department to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the council? Mr. Trumbauer?
So this just does the same thing in a different article of the code?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Any additional questions? Seeing none. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 1815. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 1815? Seeing a movement in the audience, the public hearing on 1815 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please call, please read the title of Resolution 1815.
Resolution Designating the Anarondle County Police Department as the primary law enforcement unit for the purposes of Title 20.
Thank you. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1815.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution 1815 has passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1315.
An ordinance concerning Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bill 1315, as before you, will establish Retiree Health Benefits Trust. It provides for the financing and the management of the retiree health benefits. It creates the Board of Trustees of the Retiree Health Benefits Trust. The council amended this bill in March and approved the actual trust agreement at the last council meeting on April 6th. At the last meeting, the Office of Law provided the council with a legislative summary memo, as well as a red line version of the trust agreement. Here to answer any questions the council may have is Julie Musog from the Office of Finance.
Any questions for Mr. Marzick in the administration? Ms. Flugel, any final comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no questions from the council, at this time, we'll open the public hearing, excuse me, on Bill 1315. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Bill 1315? Seeing no one signed up to speak, closed the public hearing on 1315. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1315 as amended.
An ordinance concerning Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 1315.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 1315 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1415 as amended.
An ordinance concerning zoning state licensed medical clinics.
Thank you.
Mr. Fink's bill.
Mr. Fink, give me leadoff comments?
No, I believe this is the third or fourth public hearing we've had on this bill. I know the administration has some concerns, and I'll let them put their concerns out there, and then I'll, I'd like to get some time.
Fair enough.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office. As we've said, and appreciate working with the sponsor and the council, to amend our concerns regarding this bill, and as currently drafted, we continue to support the bill.
Thank you. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marzick, so it's still the position of the administration that the available parcels in the county under this bill would be sufficient to serve the needs of county residents who need this sort of treatment? Because there was, there was some discussion at the last meeting, and Mr. Tom produced some maps, that, I mean, in my opinion, showed a dramatically reduced universe of possibilities. And I just want to make sure that now that it's been amended and that we're looking at a new version, you guys feel that there's enough opportunity for these clinics to serve the residency?
We do. And we think that the amendments that we had offered, removing some of the restrictions, as well as adding a provision about county-owned property as a site for these clinics, and a county-owned property that's either operated by the county or operated by someone that is leasing it from the county, would provide sufficient opportunity for these clinics in the county.
Okay. But I mean, no doubt that it is less opportunity than under, under current law, which doesn't put these restrictions in, right?
Correct. The bill is amended, yes.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Marzick, I have a question for you. With regards to the meeting last time, one of the questions that I raised was the subject of the one subject rule that is not only found in the state constitution, but also in the county charter. And I raised that question. Ms. Tate agreed with my assessment that it was violative of that rule, I believe. And then, of course, Ms. Blair was at the time here also as well, from the Office of Law, agreed with my statement as well. And then an opinion was subsequently issued stating that there was an issue. So the administration is basically, by continuing to support the bill in its current position, my understanding is that based on that support, it sounds like you're disregarding the Office of Law's advice? Is that what I'm gathering?
No, I mean, I think we have most respect for the Office of Law and our opinion, and I think that, you know, we're in a position where we believe this is a good bill, and we believe we can support the bill.
So you're not concerned that, I mean, as Ms. Tate pointed out, I believe during the meeting, that this amendment, this same parking restriction could easily be added to the other bill that you have in front of us? Is there a specific reason you feel supportive that it needs to stay on this bill and isn't necessarily okay on the other bill?
Well, I think if the council chose to put it on the other bill, we would support the amendment as we supported the amendment at the last hearing.
But you understand that the Office of Law's position is, from a legal standpoint, that there, by voting for the bill with this amendment on it, it puts, not, potentially puts the entire bill at risk of being struck down in the court. And potentially, they could just strike the offending language that they find violative of the rule, but they could strike the entire bill down, and you're okay with that, taking that risk, I guess?
Well, I think that you have a risk like that with any bill that you pass, if it's challenged by someone on any grounds, you have that risk.
But wouldn't you agree that the risk is probably considerably higher when our own Office of Law is the one suggesting that, I mean...
No, I wouldn't. No, I would not, I would not agree with that. If someone has to challenge the law, as someone has to challenge every law, so I think if there's an opportunity...
Right, but I mean, the fact that our own Office of Law is stating that we're in violation of the rule, don't you think that puts us at a little more risk than maybe if we didn't have that position out there?
I think there's an action that has to happen between now and then for that to be determined.
Okay, I was just asking...
There are legal opinions on every side. I'm sure you could get an attorney as well to say that it doesn't violate that, you could say that...
Yeah, but these are our attorneys, we're not hiring somebody outside.
I understand, but you could also have an attorney argue very clearly that this is a zoning bill, and that all the provisions in here are considered zoning provisions, and it's all one subject. So, it's, I think there's legal opinions everywhere.
Just wanted to make sure, it's our own Office of Law, I was asking, so...
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, please?
Yeah, I don't have any other questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. The one-subject rule, you know, I'm kind of confused how we're getting into that situation. I mean, the amendment that dealt with parking, we were dealing with parking of these facilities in the original bill, correct? In the original bill, it was changing parking for group homes. Then we amended the bill and made it outpatient only, which took out the new parking requirements for group homes, correct?
Good evening, Gregory Swain, Senior Assistant Deputy Attorney. I'd have to look at the bill as originally drafted.
I mean, originally drafted, it affected group homes.
If I may, just for a moment, this is General Agent Health Officer, Anarondale County. The original bill, as was put into discussion, was to include all state medical clinics that treated substance abuse and alcohol and substance abuse. And so, that included residential facility as well as outpatient. Residential treatment is considered a group home, but not all group homes are considered residential substance abuse treatment facilities. So, when the definition changed to just outpatient facilities, it excluded the residential treatment facilities, but not necessarily all group homes.
Right, which is why we did the amendment.
And it then encompassed something beyond the substance use treatment, affects all of the mental health, disability, all of the other group homes, as we were discussing in the other bill.
But the original bill, the original bill, before we put any amendments on it, especially the outpatient amendment, would have changed parking for everyone that was included in that bill.
I believe so.
So, then, when I put, I believe when the administration offered the amendment to put, to make this bill only apply to outpatient, it then took group homes out of the bill.
Only the part of group homes that applies to substance use treatment facilities, so not all group homes.
But there were group homes in the bill, which parking would have been affected by, had the original bill passed without any amendments.
For that narrow subset of group homes, yes.
And then my bill, I mean, I'm sorry, then my amendment came in and changed parking for group homes again.
But it, I guess, our stance, and this also applies to the other bill related to the group homes and assisted living, is that group homes is inclusive of the larger group of facilities that is also, is outside of the substance use treatment.
I understand, but the original bill was affecting parking to begin with. So, that, there wasn't a problem with two subjects there. So, why is it all of a sudden now a problem that it's two subjects, when the original bill dealt with parking?
Well, I think the distinction being with the, under the original bill, some types of group homes would have been included in that definition as the original bill was written. So, it would have affected parking to that extent. Now, since there's been a change, which was intended, I believe, to not include group homes, adding an additional parking requirement that specifically targets group homes, I think that's where we have the issue with the subjects, with it being more than one subject. Because now you have a bill that is dealing more or less exclusively with these state-licensed medical clinics, of which group homes are not included in the amendment.
But they were included in the original.
They were included in the original, absolutely.
In the original bill, they were included.
That's correct.
Absolutely. And their parking would have been affected.
Some, for some of them, yes.
Right, right, right. If we had left the original language in and not taken out the outpatient. So, you know, it wasn't two-subject then, it is two-subject now. We were dealing with some group homes before, changing parking. Now, a change in parking for group homes, it's a problem. I guess I just don't follow the logic. Of course, I'm not an attorney, but I don't understand why all of a sudden it's a big deal, I mean, you know.
Well, I think if you look at, before the amendment, after, I know there were six amendments at the last hearing, but as those amendments came into play, group homes were taken out of the bill completely.
Correct.
So, then adding a subsequent amendment that brought them back in, now you have...
But they were, they were out of the bill for 38 seconds.
True.
So, it was never, the bill never changed, and it wasn't advertised as something that didn't deal with group homes, it, you know, it wasn't, we didn't even adjourn with that it affecting, not affecting group homes.
True.
So, it's, you know, it's always affected their parking. Parking was always a part of this bill, so it was limiting where they could go. That wasn't one subject. But today, it is, it's a two-subject bill. But before we put the amendment in, which dealt with parking, it was one subject.
Before the amendment came in, that's correct.
It was dealing with parking both times. And then there was never a concern originally, especially when we all met, no one ever said, "Derek, this bill deals with parking, plus it deals with meth clinics, and locations, and zoning, and it's just two subjects." I mean, that was never an issue. And it dealt with parking before, and it deals with parking today.
Well, again, I think the distinction is, as the bill was amended, it was dealing exclusively with state-licensed medical clinic, the group home parking requirement came in later. That's why we feel there was a two-subject problem.
I feel like we need a whiteboard to work this out.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, Mr. Fink, are you finished? I want to turn to my...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Pruski.
Could it have been that, when we, and I'm just trying to figure out the confusion, could it have been, when we first submitted the bill, we were so focused on the methadone piece, and everyone was just targeting that, looking at that, that we didn't, we as a body or the Office of Law did not really look at the other details as in-depth, because we were just focused on the methadone piece? And so, as we progressed over the last 45 days or two months, then those things started to rise to the surface, as we've answered one question and got into the next subject? Is that potentially what could have happened?
Well, I think what happened is, as the definition of state-licensed medical clinics was tweaked, and there were some changes made, it was narrowed a little bit, the, under the original bill, it would have applied to some group homes. As the bill was amended, that was eliminated, because the focus was on the state-licensed facilities versus group homes, which don't necessarily have to be. So, as that progressed, that's sort of when, at that point, they were out of it. And then, the only thing that brought them back into it was the parking requirement. And, you know, and of course, at the time, this bill was introduced, we did not have the bill dealing, that deals specifically with group homes. And I think our opinion on that would be that this parking requirement would be better addressed than that bill, and would eliminate any two-subject issue.
Mr. Chairman, if, can you have, can we have Ms. Tate sort of, I would like to sort of get her on the record, I guess, what her opinion would be?
I have one quick follow-up question to Mr. Swain's comment that you just made. I understand what you're saying, that more subject-wise, we have a bill coming in that's on group homes. But do we have the problem that the doctor mentioned, that if we do that amendment in the group home bill, are we still lumping in all of these group homes that don't need to be, or is there suddenly not a problem with the example that she gave?
Well, I think with group, one of the purposes of the bill, not this bill, subsequently, the other bill, is to deal with the smaller assisted-living facilities and try to differentiate between those and group homes, because the previous definitions seemed to encompass both of them, so there was a lot of confusion about that. So, I think in the, in this bill, group homes are specifically defined, and I think if parking's going to be addressed, it seems like we fit much better into that bill than we fit into this bill.
Okay, and I have a follow-up question. It seems that the difficulty with this bill was created with the outpatient language. What was the original reason for doing that? Of making it only outpatient facilities?
Well, I think we were, the other bill is dealing more with these residential-type facilities versus...
I'm talking about the instant bill, Mr. Fink's original bill.
Right, the state-licensed medical clinics.
Right, which he initially meant to address anything that sort of fed the initial definition. I don't think he, you know, and suddenly, the outpatient was offered, and part of what was offered as a solution to that outpatienting was to say, "Okay, well, we'll agree that you can address the parking issue, since we're taking the impatient piece away." So...
I remember, Ms. Tate, if I may, I remember part of the discussion was, the way the bill was originally drafted would include DUI treatment, would include other alcohol treatment that wasn't intended to be included under the definition of the bill.
Right, and that's a separate piece.
And the provision was to remove outpatient, to exclude those treatment options.
I thought that was, that was the early intervention piece. I'm talking, outpatient is another part.
I understand, but it was part of that discussion as to why the amendment was offered.
Ms. Tate, that's a great point. I mean, at the end of the day, what was the reasoning for offering the impatient, I'm sorry, the outpatient amendment?
Well, one of the issues that we were trying to address were some of the concerns with the Fair Housing Act, because the residential, anytime you are dealing with residential facilities, you have separate prohibitions against discrimination that you have to address as well. So, one of the reasons for the outpatient amendment, I think, was to take those concerns off the table, as far as any residential, inpatient-type programs.
Group homes.
Such as, and including group homes.
Right, so the amendment was to take group homes out of the bill?
The amendment was to, correct.
Correct.
Residential facilities.
Correct. So, the amendment took group homes out of the bill, so before that amendment, group homes was in the bill, which included the parking restrictions that we're now talking about. And in the original bill, that was fine, it was a one-subject bill.
Correct, and because the definition of state-licensed medical clinics would have encompassed some of those group homes.
Right.
But not all.
Some, right.
But not all, but when it affected some, it was fine, it was a one-subject rule. Now, it affects more, and it's two-subject rule, but it's the same parking requirements, and it's still affecting group homes, and it was one subject. And the issue is parking. So, it addressed parking in the beginning, it was one subject, it still addresses parking now, and it's a different subject.
Well, again, the reason being that with the original bill, and I think what happened with the amendments is that the scope of what the bill applied to was narrowed. So, in the original bill, it would include some of those group homes. As the bill was amended...
But increasing the scope, how does that change the subject? I mean, we're not, we didn't throw in, this isn't like a DC bill where they add, you know, funding requests to going to war, I mean, it's just, it's night and day.
Well, it didn't increase the scope, it narrowed the scope, so by taking group homes out, so group homes...
But the scope is still a subject. The subject was parking, it stays in parking, it narrows it or it winds it, but the subject changed, the subject didn't change.
Well, I guess what I would say is, but for the parking requirement, this bill would have no application to group homes.
But it did originally.
But it doesn't.
It doesn't, because we amended it. But originally, it did, and that wasn't a problem.
Originally, it did, because group homes were part, were a part of the subject of the bill.
Correct.
But they're not anymore.
But they are right now.
Only as, only as the parking...
Only as it pertains to parking.
Right, but they've always been, they've always been the bill, and parking's always been affected. I just don't see the second, the second subject.
Mr. Swain, who's on first? You represent the Office of Law, obviously, I have an opinion for Ms. Tate. I do support the parking restrictions, certainly, I'd be open to whatever happens with the amendment, but I just want to be clear with the Office of Law's opinion, okay? Because I heard the administration say they're okay with the bill. You represent the Office of Law, what is your opinion on the current amendment?
Well, I'm a representative from the Office of Law, we represent the council.
Okay, well, what do you feel, I mean, I...
Well, my feeling, I agree with the memorandum, I believe, that was provided to the council, I agree with what was stated at the last meeting. We feel that the bill is violative of the two-subject rule.
Thank you.
I do, just want to point out that...
Mr. Fink?
Oh, thank you. Well, I greatly respect the Office of Law. I know during my last four years, two of the biggest bills we voted on, most controversial bills we voted on, the Office of Law was wrong, went to court, and was overturned. And we were listening to the Office of Law the whole time. And I only bring that up, because the Office of Law is not always right. Of course, no one is, other than maybe my mother, but, you know, other than that, and if we had audio on, should be watching. But, you know, I only bring that up, in all seriousness, because, you know, Office of Law is obviously not always right, it's opinion, I think, anytime you get a bunch of attorneys involved, we all know attorneys can, you know, they can argue either way on pretty much any issue. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Seeing none, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing, excuse me, on Bill 1415. If anyone wants to sign up to speak, but if you'd like to come down and speak at this time, please come forward. Seeing no move in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 1415 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1415.
An ordinance concerning zoning state-licensed medical clinics.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to introduce Amendment Number 11. Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Amendment Number 11?
This amendment removes the modification of parking requirements for group homes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt, have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Basically, this amendment removes the issue that we just debated back and forth over the last couple of minutes, and I'd like to just put on the record that if the amendment, this amendment passes, then I'm fully supportive of the bill in its position with this amendment passing. If this amendment fails, then I will be voting against the bill in the end. So, that's all I have to say about that. I think we've debated the topic back and forth, I don't know if there's any additional discussion or questions. Mr. Swain?
Yeah, my dad used to say, "Never miss an opportunity to keep your mouth shut," but I'm going to violate that now, because I think there's a distinction that perhaps might be helpful. I read the opinion of the Office of Law, and while I agree with its rationale and its research, et cetera, what I struggle with is that I'm not convinced that it really is a separate subject. So, don't disagree with the analysis of the Office of Law, but I just disagree with the final conclusion that it's, that the factual issue, that it's a different subject matter. I'm not convinced enough to believe that it is a different matter to support, to go against the original, the bill as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
If this amendment passes, it will remove the objection that the Office of Law has raised, and that will put the bill back basically before it was, before that last amendment was.
The last bill we just voted on, with the resolution, we changed the place and the language in two different sections, correct, Mr. Swain? With the last, not this bill, the last resolution.
Not what I was complying with, two different subtitles of the, I think it's the Criminal Law article.
Right, so, well, we made, we made with 17, Resolution 1715 and 1815, made two different modifications, because it applied to two different language pieces within the charter or the code, for example. So, in this instance, with the parking provision, is there a way to have parking provisions within this language that doesn't reference group home? I mean, could the name of the parking restriction change so that it only applies to this particular class of facility?
Well, I think what would happen is, under the amendment that Mr. Walker's offering, it eliminates the parking requirement for group homes, but there still is a parking requirement for state-licensed medical clinics, so that would remain in the bill.
Is it, does that requirement match the one that is on, that mirrors the group home restrictions?
It's a little different. I think the group home restriction was one space for four residents. This is, again, because this is not a residential facility, it's one space for each employee and one space for every 20 clients.
So, is it possible for us to change the restrictions, the parking restrictions, not group home-related, but to the ones that apply just to this? Could that be an additional resolution, I mean, not resolution, amendment that modifies that, or...
Well, it could be, you could do it by amendment, but I believe the bill already contains a parking requirement, because state licensed medical...
But it's not, it's not as restrictive as this. It's less restrictive, right?
The only thing this amendment is doing is eliminating the parking requirement for group homes.
No, I know that. No, I know that, what I'm saying is, this requirement that's in this language, though, is more restrictive than the language that's in the current code within the, the bill that we're voting on right now, for the, not the group homes, the, the facilities.
Right, well, I mean, state licensed medical clinic is a new use.
Yes.
So previously, what would have applied would have been just the general office space parking requirement, and I'd have to defer this to...
Right, which, which means it's not as restrictive as, as the language that's in this current amendment that we're removing.
If I may...
Does that make sense?
Does that make sense?
Let me see if I can answer Mr. Smith's question.
Currently, the way the bill is now, as amended, you have a parking requirement for state licensed medical clinics that reads one space for every employee, and one space for every 20 clients served by the clinic, and then you also have a parking requirement for group homes that reads basically one space for each employee per major shift, and one space for every four residents of a group home. That's currently how the bill stands. What Mr. Walker's amendment would do, Amendment Number 11, will eliminate that last...
I get that.
Okay. And then it will reinstate, or reconfirm, the state licensed medical clinic provision for parking.
Right, which currently stands at the general office space requirements. What I'm saying is, can we change the language that only applies to...
No, it doesn't, because what, the, since we have now defined this use, state licensed medical clinic, and we have now assigned a parking requirement to that particular use, the general provisions relative to parking for offices no longer applies to this particular use.
And I think, if Mr. Smith's question, I think, was, before we specified this use, what was the parking requirement for the general, a general office space, if, if there was no such new use as state licensed medical clinic?
Right.
And that, I'm not sure, I'd have to defer to Mr. Tom on that.
My assumption is, it's, it's less restrictive than, than what's in this language that we're removing right now...
Yes.
From the what's there.
Yes, that's correct.
So my intent would be, is there a way for us to, to, to make it sort of mirror these restrictions to, to this piece of the pot?
For general office?
No, for, for the, the office space, can we add that within the county law? Can we add that within the county code, to apply just, for that classification of, of state licensed facilities?
Do you mean for, do you mean for the residential level?
So once we pass this bill, once the bill passes, can we change the parking restriction that applies to state licensed, these types of facilities that we are modifying and restricting to particular areas within the county? Can we add language that identifies parking restrictions for those?
I think Ms. Tate has something to add, hold on just a second.
What, we're, we are leaving the parking restrictions in for the state licensed medical clinic, as it is now defined, as an outpatient facility excluding early intervention, it meets the requirements under that subtitle of the Health General article. What is, this is returning the bill to what it was before the group homes were put in. Now, if you're talking about modeling a new amendment for group homes that mirrors this...
No, not for group homes, for state licensed...
Well, that's still in, that will stay in the bill. What this is, what Mr. Walker's amendment is restoring the bill to what it looked like before Mr. Fink offered his amendment for the group home piece, after the bill was changed to eliminate group homes from the definition, or certain group homes from the definition. So, and yes, it is more restrictive, because as the bill was originally drafted, it was taking into account that state licensed medical clinics kind of operate on a different time schedule and, and traffic flow than your normal professional office would operate. So that's, that's the intent of it. And therefore, the, the bill would be just as it was before we got into this discussion in the first place, with the outpatient amendment. So, does that answer your question?
Sort of. I, I think Mr. Fink's, and certainly, I think my intent would be to, at the end of the day, we just want restrictive parking for those types of facilities. Whether that's, you know, removing this and adding something later, I'm fine with that, but I feel like if, if this fails, essentially, it's going to go back to the more relaxed sort of state parking restrictions, at least in my head. I mean, I don't know, maybe, like I said, I'm not a lawyer.
If the amendment fails, if the amendment fails, no, we, what, if this amendment fails, what will happen is, we will still have the bill in the posture as the group home parking standard is still included in the bill. That's what it means.
And the state licensed medical clinic as well.
Right.
No matter what, no matter...
It will be violated above the two-subject rule, in my opinion, which is why I'm putting the amendment forward.
No matter if the amendment is taken or not.
But if it's removed, then I vote for the bill, I have no issue with the bill, as long as that amendment is changed, as long as this amendment's passed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grasso.
Of course, of course, I think we need to get that white chalkboard out, too. Here, here's my concern.
We scared Julie Johnson away.
My concern is, is I got constituents coming to the school and are ballistic that these treatment facilities are in residential neighborhoods, okay? And I'm getting the feeling that when we originally put the parking restriction in, it makes it harder for those type of businesses to operate in a residential neighborhood, am I right about that? So if we turn around and we pass this amendment, we're actually making it easier for someone to open up a treatment center in a residential neighborhood, no?
No, the only thing this amendment does is, it is removing the parking requirements for group homes.
And group homes is defined as what?
Well, depends, we have legislation pending right now for a new definition of group homes.
What is it as of today?
Um, I'd have...
A group home is a group of people that live in there, that they can also be, they just live there, and they're not getting any kind of treatment, because, you know, like I said...
It could be all sorts of different, you could have people living there who are getting treatment, people who are not getting treatment, I think it implies some level of supervision, and, and usually for a reason such as recovery or treatment.
Here's, here's the definition. I'm reading this based on Bill 2315, Councilman Grasso, that is coming up, I think, at the next meeting. A group home means a residential facility licensed or supervised by a federal, state, or local agency that houses individuals who require care, supervision, or assistance in a family care, group care, foster care, or boarding facility. And that language is being amended, is proposed to be amended in Bill 2315.
Okay, so I don't hear about treat, any treatment of addiction or anything like that?
Well, those are all supervised by federal, state, or local agencies.
Right.
And I think the definition has been used to include that residential treatment component.
It just, it just appears to me that by leaving without this pass, and it becomes more restrictive, as far as those kind of facilities coming into a neighborhood, that's the feeling I keep getting it, and by passing this, you've, like Pete says, you've relaxed the standards. That's pretty much what it boils down to me.
But the bill that's in front of us would give you the opportunity to add these same restrictions to it, and not be violative of the two-subject rule. That's the only point that I... So we've already got a bill down in front of us that's redefining the group homes, that we could, that you could add this amendment to, that we're removing. Not the amendment, but the...
The parking requirement.
Thank you, I'm not trying to confuse it.
So we can take this one coming down the pike and add it to it?
Correct. That's my proposal.
With the support of the Office of Law, is that correct, Mr. Swain?
As far as parking requirements for group homes?
That's the question here, because we're, we're entertaining this, or they're entertaining it, based on, on the, you know, assuming that they can...
I don't think it's entertaining.
I guess we're moving into...
Someone is entertaining, well, the potential of doing that in the future.
There's certainly the potential for doing that in the future, yes.
So 2315 is, we can just turn around, and we can take this same wording, and, not that one, but the other one.
Any additional discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll and move number 11.
Mr. Perutka.
This is Amendment Number 11?
Yes, it is.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, Amendment Number 11 is passed.
Thank you. Bill Number 1415, as amended, will be heard at the May 4 meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1515.
An ordinance concerning self-insurance fund claims for payment from the fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Marzick, are you ready?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office, Bill 1515 will allow a central service officer to delegate an authority to review and approve certain claims for payments from the self-insurance fund and the safety, to the safety and insurance manager. In addition, it will increase the authority level for the manager to approve claims from $5,000 to $25,000 for property and vehicle liability claims, and $10,000 for general liability claims. These were the amendments that were passed at the last council session. Here to answer any questions is Amy Lanham from Office of Central Services, as well as Doug Jones, from the Office of Central Services.
Mr. Jones, Ms. Lanham, thank you for coming down this evening, and apologize for keeping you waiting in the audience.
We don't need parking.
It's non-controversial, is that what you're saying?
So we can take some away from you? Central services have too much parking?
Then what kind of building you're in?
Just, just reminded, he's the person who fixed the flood in this building as well.
Yes, we thank you for your assistance with that, Mr. Jones. Is there any questions from the council on this bill? I think at this point, we've amended it and changed it. Seeing none, thank you all very much. The public hearing on Bill 1515 is now open, is there anyone wishing to speak on 1515? Seeing no move in the audience, the public hearing on 1515 is now closed, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1515.
An ordinance concerning self-insurance fund claims for payment from the fund.
Thank you. Any final discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 1515.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill 1515, as amended, is passed.
Thank you.